This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, well, call to order the meeting of the Stratford zoning commission for September 9th at 7:04 PM. Members present are Commissioners Francis, Vacola, Solhavy, Henrik. Alternate members Manos and Fredette are also present, as is Jay Habansky and Pat Sullivan. So we'll go right into the agenda. We have the 2370 Stratford Avenue JNC Properties LLC. Are they presenting tonight? Mr. Habansky?
No, that's just, this is Jay Habansky. That's just our holdover from last month. It just stays on the agenda.
Stays on the agenda. Very good. Okay, approval of the minutes of the August 26, 2020, meeting. Can I have a motion to, oh, Mr. Habansky? Have they been sent out?
Yes, I just wanted to let the commission know that the addressed 95 Armory Road that was approved with conditions last month, the minutes have it noted as 96 Armory Road, and I'm just going to suggest that amend, that amendment be made to these minutes.
Okay, sorry. So the correct one is 95?
Yes, Jay Habansky, 95.
Okay, so can I motion approve with that amendment?
Mike Henrik, I make a motion to approve changing, the amendment to change to 96 Armory Road to 95.
Motion by Mr. Henrik, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by, I heard Linda, Linda Taylor, until Mr. Migliotti arrives, we'll have you sit as our, until, as his replacement. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose no, carries five to zero. Okay, any campsite reviews, Mr. Habansky?
Jay Habansky, no, no campsite reviews.
Any enforcement complaints, any members, commissioners? No, I don't think I'm going to say that. Any accessory apartment application?
Jay Habansky, nothing new.
Cement and erosion control?
Jay Habansky, nothing new.
Okay. All right, so let's just go right to 500 North Avenue versus the town of Stratford zoning commission. Mr. Habansky and Ms. Sullivan, why don't you bring us up to speed?
Okay, well, I'll just introduce the agenda quickly. We had two items, we weren't, when the agenda was set, we weren't 100% sure whether or not we were going to need executive session. That's why you're going to see it on the agenda twice. So, you know, I'll leave that up to Attorney Sullivan, whether she, she feels that we need to set up an executive session. I think we're all under the understanding that we will not need executive session this evening to achieve what we need to, to work on what we need to do tonight. Attorney Sullivan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Jay. Pat Sullivan, from Attorney for the Board. So our objective, or our order from the court is Judge Shaw has remanded this matter to the commission to, and I'll just read her, her exact language. The court remands the decision to the commission with specific orders to reconsider the application and to issue a collective written decision with its reasons for the approval or denial, and the evidence on which it relies cited in the decision, as well as all the other requirements pursuant to general statutes 8-30G. So, as you know, the decision was produced and included a number of reasons. And each of those reasons, in my opinion, is supported by evidence that's in the record. What the judge is asking us to do is sort of a technical thing, which is connect the reasons in your decision to evidence in the record. And then give me what's called a collective decision, which means it's a decision of all of the members, and not, you know, not, not just one reason from one person and one reason from another person. So basically, she's asking you to sort of confirm or make clear, clarify that the reasons that were, that were given are the reasons of all the, of all the commissioners, that it's a collective decision. So, Mr. Chairman, maybe you can tell me how you'd like to proceed, or? And I think we could go-
I just had a question, is there anything in, in the statutes, or the law, says that the board has to vote collectively? Are we not allowed to have differing reasons or opinions as to why we don't think that the, that our, our decision to vote a certain way is, I mean, in what body do we need to vote collectively on every item and in unison? You know, are we not allowed to be free-thinking and choose our opinions as, as we gain our education through this whole process we've been through?
So I, I, I understand your point, but I think the, when a, when a board renders the decision 5-0 and says this project is denied, or this zone amendment is denied, or this zone change is denied, then in order for, you have to have five people aligned on a certain, at least a certain number of reasons in order to support it. Right, but I'm saying this particular decision was 5-0, but yes, I completely agree with you, but-
I think we were pretty elaborate.
Yeah, she's saying it isn't clear from the decision that was rendered that all of these reasons, that each member confirms that that's, that's their, that's their opinion. So, I mean, you could end up, in all honesty, you could end up with not all of the reasons that were, that were listed on the decision, and still come up with a denial with all those, the reasons that were, that are collective.
Does the statute say that we need to agree, that every member needs to agree to every reason that a, that a person states? I mean, you know, some people are more vocal than others, and, you know, their thoughts are, their thought process is more internal than vocal. And through the process of, of listening and learning and going through the hours and hours and hours and hours we went through of testimony, they, they formulated an opinion based on the facts and opinions that were presented to us. So, you know, it, I don't know how, I don't know how we could be more elaborate than we were, is my point. And I think we were pretty, pretty elaborate throughout this whole process. So I don't understand, you know, how we can, how we can be more clear than for every member just to say, I agree with every point that everybody said, and I'm voting no. And that's the only way, you know, is every member going to have to state a, read a four-page, you know, memorandum as to the reasoning why? And if there's any differing opinions on there, then it doesn't count, or it's not valid? I mean, it's absurd.
No, it, it isn't, it isn't, she's not asking you to go back and ask, hey, where did Commissioner X say this in the record? She's basically saying, if you think that there's, for instance, an issue with the wetlands, or an issue with public health and safety, just confirm on the record that, yes, there, you know, you do believe that there is a, that it's inconsistent with the forest management plan. Why? Well, because we had testimony, we had evidence, we had experts testify, whether they were from the town, or from the concerned neighbors, or, you know, from an expert that says it doesn't comply with the, with the Roosevelt, you know, the forest management plan.
Item and say that? I mean, how, and I'm not, I'm not yelling, I'm not complaining to you, because I understand you're, you're trying to guide us through this decision, or this, this, this request that this judge has made, and I, and I appreciate your efforts to do that, because I know you're as confused by it as I am. But how do we, does every member on this board have to read a 20-page article that says, I, I agree with XXX and X, and if there's four differing viewpoints on that, does it invalidate our decision to vote no on this? You know, no, we're not going to vote as a consensus, you know, because we're, we're all adults coming from varying, you know, places in life, and we have different reasons for it. But it doesn't mean that, that as we all voted no to this, it was any less of a no than, than if we voted all for the same thing, or all voted no for different reasons, all of which were mentioned and brought up during the whole testimony that went on for weeks and months, and hours and hours. And by the way, we are all volunteers, and, and we're not getting paid for this. We're elected officials, there's no requirements laid out for us as zoning officials, there's no mandatory education, there's nothing in, in, in the process. So, you know, we're using the best of our knowledge to come to this game from the information brought to us. And when we all say no because of the testimony presented, and we were pretty elaborate in, in our reasoning, and most of us were, the more vocal ones, where the less vocal people listened and agreed to what the questions we asked and the information we had. So, again, I don't, I don't know how we get any more clear or concise than, than what we did. And I think we did a pretty good job that night, and we worked very hard to do that. And I don't know how we can be any more clear or concise than, than, than what we did during the meeting. And I think this meeting was two years ago, and now we're supposed to go back and, you know, review this, which I've done, and spent more hours of my time volunteering to try and get some information here. It's just, you know, I don't know. Sorry, it's my little rant. I'm just confused by the judge's ruling, as everybody is.
Jay, do you want to chime in, or I saw your hand go up, but then I'll have some comments after that.
Yeah, Jay Habansky here, and Mike, I don't disagree with anything that you've said. And Pat, thanks for all your help in trying to put, put everything together here. One suggestion might be, in order to stay as consistent with the initial decision, which was, we all feel, I think was, there was consensus, but maybe we need to memorialize it tonight. I might make the suggestion that we could go through the, you know, the chairman might want to, might read off each reason for each decision, and you all could discuss them briefly, or discuss them at length, or vote on them. And I'll leave that procedure, I think, to Attorney Sullivan's suggestion on how you, you effectively memorialize them. But that might be a, a strategy to consider in order to expedite tonight and not be here all night like we were the night when, you know, we spent hours putting this together a few years ago.
So let me, let me just add a couple things here, and, and to the members. When we initially debriefed this ruling that we got, I, and this comes from too many years of studying some parts of the law. I got the distinct impression that the judge looked upon us as a judicial body, which in some cases we are, a unique animal where we're legislative and judicial. In many judicial applications, and let's talk like the Supreme Court or an appellate court where there's more than one judge. They, when they hear a case, they will issue a decision. Decision is a written document explaining the reasons for the decision. And then, like in the case of the Supreme Court, you know, five members at least will say, yes, we agree with this, and this is our decision. Another member may come to the same conclusion, but not necessarily in, share the same reasoning, and they can write a concurring opinion, I believe it's called. And if you disagree with the ruling, then you come up with a dissenting opinion. So I think the judge was looking for a, a, an opinion that reflected that there were five members, or three, well, in this case, five members, that came to it through generally the same reason. Then you're absolutely right, like, we, we come at it from different places, but after analyzing the record, it seems that we pretty much were there. I think she's just asking us to make the final leap to say, oh, yes, this is exactly what we were. And I think, I think what I'll do is I'll go through these, and similar to the procedure that we followed for a couple of the applications we did this year since this decision came back. We'll go through a roundup, do you concur, do you concur, do you concur, just so that it is abundantly clear, ad nauseam, that we all came to the similar statements. And I, I do realize this was some time ago, and reading through it, I actually highlighted my own testimony here, and I asked that that be part of our record, because, you know, we went into, it would be almost impossible to recreate that night with 1,009 pages worth of documents to, you know, just pretend we can go back in time and redo it. But I think, thankfully with the attorney's help, we've actually been able to narrow it down to about, I don't know, 10 to 15 stated reasons that either you, myself, or the other commissioners had elicited from all of the testimony, and, you know, we'll send back a document that is the concurrent, the decision of the majority. Does that make sense? Okay. Pat, any further comments before we-
No, I, I think, I, I would just say that I think there was some general testimony that, that commissioners were relying on, whether it was the testimony of, of, just for an example, you know, with the Versalock wall, or the structural engineering of the wall. I think we had a, a PE from the neighborhood, or Richard Eck, who was, you know, gave a very professional presentation. You had testimony from Renee Pasalto, who was the town's expert about the structural, you know, wall. So I think that in general, if you remember it, and if you don't remember it, you know, I think everybody can sort of weigh in and, you know, we'll do the best we can with, with, with the, with the process.
Okay. So procedurally, we have the unique ability to have the five commissioners that voted on this back, due to the presence of Commissioner Manos and Commissioner Fredette as alternates. So, I don't know if Mr. Migliotti's joined, so, Mr. Francis, unless, I hope you have no objection, but we're, I'm going to ask Mr. Fredette to sit for you for this meeting, just so that we can have the original five commissioners that voted on it speaking. Do you have any objections, sir?
No, I have no objections.
Okay, thank you. Okay, just for, also for housekeeping matters. I call to, I note in the record, and this is the 1,009-page document, that beginning on page 714 and moving through to approximately page 721, Exhibit 57D, is the discussion of 795 James Farm Road, amending the regulations. And that was the, the debate that took place. We had a motion by Mr. Henrik, seconded by Ms. Manos, to take it off the table. And then we had a motion by Mr. Henrik, seconded by Ms. Manos, to approve section 28 titled Julia Ridge Apartment Zone and RS1 Zone, and we proceeded to begin discussion. My own comments go from seven, page 714, and then 715, 716, and 720, 721, just for my own record here. In summary, I'm going to go through these one by one, and then we can talk about it as we go along. And if people have questions or need their recollection refreshed, we might be able to do it right that, right there. One of the issues that was there was that the applicant had not submitted a completed special case application for section 5.4 of the zoning regulations, for a complete review to be conducted by the zoning commission. The applicant had chosen to ignore this provision that outlines the affordable housing application process in the town of Stratford. This was mentioned by Commissioners Fredette, Solhavy, and Henrik during their remarks. Any questions on that, or anybody need any further clarification on that particular point? Item two was that the application is incomplete as the petitioner had not submitted the application fee for the special case application, specifically mentioned by Mr. Fredette, Commissioner Solhavy, and Commissioner Henrik. Next item was that the proposed development is inconsistent with the towns of Stratford's 2013 Plan of Conservation and Development, mentioned by Mr. Henrik and myself. And the plan of conservation development is part of our, part of our record. The fourth was that the proposed development is inconsistent with the forest management plan of the town of Stratford's Roosevelt Forest, again mentioned by Mr. Henrik and myself. The proposed development would be detrimental to the public health and safety for residents and surrounding ecosystems and wetlands, specifically mentioned by myself, Commissioner Solhavy, as well as Commissioners Vacola and Henrik. The proposed development would do irreversible damage to the surrounding wetlands and the flora and fauna within that ecosystem, mentioned by myself and Commissioner Henrik. The application has not submitted an application to the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission for a review of potential impacts on the surrounding wetlands, mentioned by myself and Mr. Henrik. The proposed development would create irreversible long-term degradation of the Roosevelt Forest, Cemetery Brook, and surrounding wetlands, specifically mentioned by myself and Mr. Henrik. The magnitude of proposed development would create traffic issues which would impede emergency response times, impede access to local properties, and disrupt local traffic flows. This would propose a risk to public's health and safety, mentioned by myself and Mr. Henrik. And there's a fairly lengthy discussion of it during the, in the record regarding testimony from Fire Chief Lampard, and the arrangement of fire hydrants in the area, and the necessity of having alternate routes should one of the access points, either on Orno Lane or James Farm Road, be unavailable, and the ability of-
I don't know where I-
of-
Alex, mute your phone.
Cool, got it. I'll leave it outside next time.
The ability of shelter and apparatus to make it through the James Farm and Armstrong Road intersections, specifically the narrow road that abuts the pond. The applicant failed to satisfy the special case criteria identified in section 20 of the zoning regulation, mentioned by Commissioners Fredette, Solhavy, and Henrik. Much of this was in discussion regarding the noise and vibration necessary for, for trucks to do extensive work in the area. The proposed development, more specifically the 30-foot-tall retaining wall, would present a clear and public danger to residents, children, and emergency first responders. This danger would be increased in the event of inclement weather. I know Mr. Henrik discussed that extensively, as did I. It's questionable whether the retaining wall would support any large equipment, including fire apparatus responding to emergencies on site. Again, Mr. Henrik and myself, I know I discussed that heavily regarding the, whether ambulances would be able to make the large, the steep grade to get back to James Farm Road, since it was set quite a ways down from street level. It was concern regarding the availability of sufficient water to fight fires in the event that there is a fire on site. We had taken testimony regarding fire hydrants. Mr. Henrik and myself mentioned that. There's only two more, guys. The stormwater retention system is located too close to the structural components of the proposed retaining wall, compromising the structural integrity of the site. Again, this was, actually, just Mr. Henrik had discussed this. And the applicant had provided insufficient information regarding the entire stormwater control system, which will create unsafe conditions that will compromise the structural integrity of the entire site, specifically mentioned by Commissioner Henrik in his remarks. Okay, that's a summary of the, of what we had, that it seemed that there was consensus in. In later testimony, Mr. Fredette and Ms. Manos had indicated they concurred with that. So let's just go through the members, and if you want to add something from your recollection, or something from these items that you'd like to speak to, let's do that, and then we'll see if we can come to, if we're at a consensus. Mr. Henrik, do you want to start?
Sure. I, I did go through some of my testimony. Had to take time off from work to do that, even though I'm not getting paid for this. My cost and expense, I did it. So, the police, the, I think the, the police department had talked about the traffic congestion, not enough parking spaces, ingress and egress into the lots, the steep driveway making it difficult for large delivery vehicles, the, the issues with getting out onto, out onto the road. I know you had talked about the plan of conservation easement, but it, one of the things, it doesn't promote any walking areas, it's overly dense, it's not in character with the neighborhood, groundwater contamination into the river. There's no public transportation out there, it doesn't fit into Roosevelt Forest Plan of Conservation, which I think you spoke about. The fact that it's spot zoning. And we had talked about that quite a bit, the erosion in sediment. We have the pie-billed dock and the box turtle out there, the retaining wall is inadequate, the, the hydrostatic pressure that would be caused by, would cause the structural damage which you talked about. There's no easement, I don't know if you had mentioned that, there's no easement granted to the applicant to either, if somebody or something went over the wall, or if there's some type of maintenance that needed to be done to the wall, there's no easement or way to get any emergency vehicles down to the site except through, except by coming through the wetlands, which is, which is not a viable option. Fire apparatus, you know, the, the Fire Chief had talked about, only in a perfect condition would the fire apparatus be able to get through there, based on the steep grade. I know, Mr. Solhavy, you had talked about, they aren't made to work at those grades, it reduces their capacity significantly. But the weight out onto the edge, because some of those, some of those outer buildings that are closer to the wall, the weight on the edge of the emergency vehicles would, would cause structural damage and possible failure of the wall. And that's, that's kind of what I came up with, that I, some of it, I know you talked about, but, but some of those items, I think, were, were not in there. They might have been covered as, as, as a, in a broader swipe, but it's just a little more detail, but that's what I had.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Vacola, do you want to add anything to your remarks, or any items for your reasoning?
Commissioner Vacola, as a former police officer and a public safety person, I did have a lot of issues with the traffic over there. I worked at Flood Middle School as a school resource officer, and I know at certain parts of the day, in the morning with the buses, and in the afternoon with the buses, that the traffic was just horrendous in Chapel School, too, we, we got there. With their, you know, coming in in the morning and leaving. Also, the parking spaces, that 215 parking spaces, people have two cars, some have three. I just don't think it's enough, you know, for families over there. The concern for the fire department with the water being down the road, I think the nearest hydrant was at Orno Lane. And, you know, we talked about the grade of that driveway, inclement weather would cause a major problem for trucks to go down there to fight the fire, and even persons to try to get down there, and it's just a big concern. There's no sidewalks over there, I think, right? I don't know, I kind of remembered that there wasn't. And I don't even know if there's anything for people that if they're going to use mass transit over there, there's nothing for them to go to without sidewalks going to be walking in the road, and that's another safety hazard. So, all the other stuff, and the other thing that stood out was, you know, ignoring that some of the laws that we have, you know, that they were incomplete, the application, and, you know, everybody should be abiding by the law, I feel. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Mr. Fredette?
I'm not sure if it was covered in the list of that you had read off earlier out of page 700 and some odd. But the, the, few of the things that, first, I concur definitely with what Mr. Henrik was saying, and with Mr. Vacola. Those are issues that are very, that stand out very much in my mind also. Two of the other things that I don't agree with their traffic study, the amount of cars leaving at different times, I just felt that- leaving at different times, I just felt that it just really didn't fit in well with that small area of getting in and out of, particularly trying to get in it in the evenings because of the coming in from Peters Lane or the Shelton route that they would have come in. The other was, that stood out a lot was the trucks coming to and from with hauling in materials and hauling out materials. The amount of 10-wheeler trucks that would have to be coming in and out of there would, at first I think, do tremendous amount of damage to James Farm Road itself and I don't think that they would be able to, you know, support what they were going to be doing. But for the most part, concurring with all that had been said up to this point.
Okay, thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Manos, do you wish to...
I concur with all three.
Or any other items?
I concur with all three and I just feel, felt that was very unsafe. The wall was unsafe and like they said, the trucks coming in and out of there, it's a very narrow road to get in and out of there and the water issue was so far away if the firemen have to use it. So I concur with everything else that they said.
So in addition to the 15 points that had been identified from our decision, I also detected the concern about lack of sidewalks and availability of transportation and concern for the, the volume of traffic and concern regarding the traffic study that had been presented, whether it was indeed accurate. And I just wanted to add one more thing. There was, when we were talking about the fire apparatus, there was an item that was put in, that I mentioned in my remarks that came from the testimony where they said the proposed grade in the road was at 10% in several locations and most apparatus had a limit of 6% or 3.5 degrees. So I just wanted to bring that in there. So for all of those reasons that have been stated, I'm going to go through a roll call and I'll ask if members concur with all the 15 plus the additional two that came out in the testimony. So...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can, can you also put in there the, the lack of easement that would allow any type of maintenance to the wall or, or the ability for emergency vehicles to get down to the bottom of the wall in the event something or someone went over, you know, whether it was the need for an ambulance or a fire truck or whatever it might be? That was not part of the application and based on the, the width of the, the development did not allow for that.
Okay, so the inability of apparatus, lack of an easement and an inability of apparatus to get to, I guess, to the bottom part of the wall should any rescue be needed there?
Should any emergency or maintenance need to be done? Should any emergency occur or maintenance need to be done on the wall?
Okay. Okay, I'll have that in there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I also heard from, I think I heard from Commissioner Fredette that, you know, the, the general concern of during the construction period that there was, you know, the trucks coming in and I think there was testimony as to the, the roadways and the, the two-year period of time that you would have for, to get the, get the construction done. So I think that, that seemed to be a universal thought.
The two-year construction period and the trucks entering throughout.
The large, it was the, I, I, that was part of, I read through that testimony, the large amount of trucks that would need to come in, A, to deliver materials, the massive amount of materials that would need to be delivered. Basically it was they would need to have an eight, you know, a 10-wheeled truck pull into the site every six minutes for, you know, 24 hours a day for eight months in order just to get the fill to, fill it in, let alone to bring in the block and all the other construction materials, which would render that road unusable by, unusable by any other persons.
I'm just trying to find the number. So say that again, Mike, every, one truck every six minutes was your calculation? Any other reason that we want to put into our list?
Mike's talking but nobody can hear him.
Who's talking?
Mike.
Mike? Mike, we can't hear you.
Myself. I had talked about just that, the, the massive amount like, you know, every six minutes for eight months, the trucks would need to come in and their, their expert had, the neighborhood's expert had said that my numbers were actually off because the trucks only carry about 10 yards, not 20 yards. So my calculations were about half of the reality, it would be double that. But that would, that was just to fill in the site, let alone to bring this, the blocks in, the techno blocks or whatever they were using to build the wall, to bring in the concrete and all the other construction materials. So that it would, it would make that road basically impassable by anyone except for the construction trucks who are lined up from probably Route 8 all the way up to the site for probably two years. And you did mention it in one of your, not, not in detail, but in one of the notes, it did talk about that.
Yeah, I think if you look at the record, the testimonies, you would need, this was the testimony of Richard EZYK, he's a PE who is a general civil engineer with 40 years of, of expertise and his, he said the constructability, truck weighs 30,000 pounds empty, would be limited to 10 cubic yards material, 3,600 trips required, one truck every eight minutes for six months and that would wreak havoc on James Farbs Road. I, I think that the sense was, there was other testimony as well, including Commissioner Heinrich's comments, that it would just be, the, the magnitude of the construction suggested that would be devastating.
The magnitude of the construction devastating to James Farm Road.
And the, the ability for public safety equipment getting up there, be ambulances or fire trucks, they would have to be routed around and the extended time that it would take was, was significantly increased by their, by what would be their inability to get down that road.
The hydrants too, remember Mike, with the water? They had to go down the street or something for the hydrants?
I, I think you should, you should also...
Go ahead.
Pardon?
Go ahead.
No, I said the water hydrants were, were far away also for the fire department in case there was any kind of a fire or whatever. I think that was one of the issues too.
Definitely. Let me see, do we have that covered? Yes. One of the, one of the boat number 13.
Order to fight fires in the event there's a fire on site.
Hydrants, yeah. Okay, so we got that one. I was just noticing on my, my notes here that I think we were talking that all of this would give us approximately five or six more affordable units and actually move the town's percentage of affordable housing even further down. So all of this massive project and we'd have a gross add of maybe six affordable units, but actually a net loss. So this actually would, would hurt our ability to meet the state's requirement for affordable housing. So in the question of whether it outweighs the need for it, this would not actually help us, at least in the overall sense.
And I think you had testimony from Senator Kelly that the Stratford has a history of providing affordable housing and actually has a lot of affordable housing available, just not qualified in that 10% sense and that both Stony Brook coming off because they paid off their federal loans and Success Village coming off, you know, the, the practical amount of affordable housing in Stratford is quite high. It's just that they don't technically qualify under the 8-30G Affordable Housing statute, but that, that factored into the, what, what the chairman was just speaking about, which is the, the public health and safety and the environment are, are substantial public interests. And the question is, does that outweigh the need for affordable housing? And given the numbers here, that's a, I think that will be an important point for Judge, for Judge Shaw.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, we've, we've concentrated on this number for some time. As you know, as members are keenly aware that the state is, we are subject to 8-30G is there's the public policy goal set down by the state legislature that we would have 10% of our housing be deemed affordable under their definitions, which there's sometimes, I question whether they're, they're based in, in reality, but nonetheless they are, the statutes in there and whereas there's a number of areas that would, in a layman's definition of affordable, meet that criteria for one reason or another and Stony Brook was the obvious candidate example, it's not counted just because it doesn't meet the statutory definition. So if we're talking about true affordable with a lowercase a, housing, we have a higher percentage of it in Stratford than the statutory calculation would, would indicate. So yes, I definitely concur on that and I know Senator, the Senator was, did provide some good testimony on that. Okay, so I think we've probably gotten beyond the initial 15, I think we've probably gotten about 20 of them right now. So it has better notes than me. Okay. Okay, so beyond the 15, I know we had identified, again, the sidewalks and transportation concerns about the, the, the traffic and the traffic impact in the area, the large number of trucks and just even to bring in the fill, a heavy number somewhere around one every six minutes and the total potential devastation to James Farm Road, just to bring the materials in there. Let me see here, the lack of an easement and inability of, for trucks to get down for any emergency or maintenance there. The percentage of units and how it would affect our, and it's very minimal impact on our counts, our gross count and actually we're setting our net count back as far as affordable housing units are concerned by the statutory calculation. Am I forgetting anyone? I'm trying to do this really hard and it's...
Jay Habansky here, Commissioner Solhavy. I thought I heard from you, a grade of 10% at the driveway creates a dangerous circumstances for emergency apparatus?
Yes, you did, sir.
And then I think I also heard that, and I'm not sure if this is, I, I heard Attorney Sullivan mention that, I think I heard her mention, this, this was stated in the testimony that Stratford has a long history of providing affordable housing, although not necessarily counted on the affordable, count towards the affordable housing stock in town. There was Jay Habansky one more time, there one more that I, I'm not sure if you mentioned again here, Chris, was the questions as to the accuracy of the traffic study itself.
Yeah.
Okay, you got that?
Yep. Traffic, accuracy, it's traffic study.
One of the other points I brought up and I, we had mentioned it in regards to the wall, but the way the, the water, the rainwater retention system was designed, it was squeezed in too tight and pushed too close to the, to the wall, which would have created the, you know, compromising situation from the wall, for the wall as the rainwater fell in, as it leached out of the system and came out the wall, but also it compromised the geo-synthetic or I think it was geo-synthetic fabric that was used, stabilized the, the ground. They weren't compatible.
I think it was the punctures in the geo-synthetic fabric.
Yeah. That would need, would, would need to be used to allow the, the water to flow through.
Would allow the water to go through?
Yeah, I think that that was what the, what the testimony was.
And Commissioner Henrik, I believe you stated earlier a point about the buildup of hydrostatic pressure behind the wall. Is that, is that similar or was that a different point than the one you just made?
I, I, I think it's, I think it's different.
So do I.
I, I think, I think the, the, as the water comes out, whether it's as the water sits in the parking lot or as it fills up behind the wall and waits to leach into the ground, that hydrostatic pressure would build up and cause a, a dangerous and compromising situation for the integrity of the retaining wall.
Hydrostatic pressure to compromise the...
The structural integrity of the wall. You know, it did, one of the, one of the things we talked about, I know, is that response time, it talks about, we talked about the, the fire trucks coming from engine company four, which would take a minute and 47 seconds with the construction delays, they would have to route around, it would take four minutes and 23 seconds.
Okay, let me just note that in the emergency response, hold on, let me find it. Okay, here it is. So say that again, Mike, just so I can note it here. Routing traffic.
You had brought it up, you had talked about how coming from Orenoke, engine company four, response time would be one minute, 47 seconds, but with the, with the massive amount of trucks and construction debris, whether they were putting in the sewer line or bringing in water lines, whatever it might be, it would, it would delay the response time to four minutes and 23 seconds because they needed to route around.
Through Orenoke Lane and underneath the parkway, through that intersection. Right. Do you recall that?
And I think somebody had talked about, you know, some houses that had recently burned up on one of those roads because the fire trucks couldn't get there quick enough. Regu, you talked about, I don't know if I mentioned spot zoning as well?
You know, I don't have that down here, so I'll put that in.
You know, I, I, I know I had talked about how we've expanded some zones because they're attached to the zone, but this is kind of taking a dart and throwing it in a map and saying, let's put this there. saying, let's put this there.
The lack of bores, I guess that must have been something we had at some point.
Soil tests.
Soil testing, yeah. But I guess that might have been more connected with the sediment erosion we had to talk about.
At the point of the application, they didn't have the soil test to support any of their information.
Actually, just a question to the town attorney, because more just review, there were three separate parts to this. One was the zone change, one was the special case, and one was the sediment erosion. There were actually three votes that were part of this. Did we lose Pat?
There's the text amendment, there's the zone change, and then there's the special case.
Okay.
I think sediment erosion was on your separate.
So is this case answering them collectively or individually? Probably should have asked that right at the beginning.
So I think you had three separate decisions.
Yeah.
Which were, and I think you had different reasons for those decisions. I think they're, the, my recollection is that spot zoning was on one of them. Let me just see if I can pull those up.
Page 716 or maybe, Attorney Sullivan, you and I had some lengthy discussions as to how to handle the differing votes. I took all three, amend the zoning regulations, change the zone, and the special case off the table.
Actually, one point, you said my original motion was just on item number one.
Right.
Let me just get there.
It's actually pretty impressive that somebody was able to get all these words down.
I know, that's, I think we gotta get, get my girl to Billy lunch because it looks like she typed this out. That couldn't have been easy.
It came out of my budget, so I hope they got them all.
So Jay, maybe you can help me here in terms of, I think there were three separate, I'm trying to pull them up, but there were three separate...
There were actually four. So there was an application for a text amendment, an application for a zone change to the newly formed zone, there was the erosion and sediment control application, and then the special case application.
Jay, what was the first one? What was the first one you mentioned?
There was a, Jay Habansky here, this, it was text amendment.
Okay, I got it.
Zone change, erosion, sediment control, and then special case, so four total.
Right.
So it would be my suggestion that you, that you go through each one of those and, you know, confirm that the members are in agreement with regard to the reasons put down for each, for each one of those.
So all individually, or can we collectively do group them?
Well, I think as long as we have on the record, because I think the, they're not all identical. So I just want to make sure, I mean, I realize we're doing belt and suspenders here, but I just want to make sure that we make it clear to Judge Shaw that there's a consensus here.
Okay.
Commissioner Sahlavy, I might suggest, and with, with agreement from Attorney Sullivan, that you maybe follow the same format that you did, you kind of run through each item. Since the other ones are much shorter as well, you might be able to run through them in a similar fashion.
Okay.
What is it, maybe, Mr. Chairman, maybe you should read the list out and ask each member what points they agree or disagree with, or should we read each one individually?
So let's go through these, I'll read them off again, and I'll ask if everyone concurs. This is going to be very monotonous, but I guess it's the only way we can do this. Okay. Okay, so item number one, the applicant has not submitted a completed special case application for section 5.4 of the zoning regulations for a complete review to be conducted by the zoning commission. The applicant has chosen to ignore the provision that outlines the affordable housing application process in the town of Stratford. Ms. Manos, do you concur?
I concur.
Mr. Pradette?
I concur also.
Mr. McCollough?
I concur.
Mr. Henrik?
I concur.
The chair concurs. Item two, the application is incomplete as the petitioner has not submitted the application fee for a special case application. Guys, just say, just give me a yes, okay? So Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Chair's yes. God, this is gonna be awful. The proposed development is inconsistent with the Strat, the town of Stratford's 2013 Plan of Conservation and Development. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Proposed development is inconsistent with the forest management plan for the town of Stratford's Roosevelt Forest. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Proposed development would be detrimental to the public health and safety for residents and surrounding ecosystems and wetlands. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The proposed development would do irreversible damage to the surrounding wetlands and the flora and fauna within that ecosystem. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The applicant has not submitted an application to the inland wetlands and water courses commission for a review of potential impacts on the surrounding wetlands. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Yes, Chair votes yes. The proposed development would create irreversible long-term degradation of the Roosevelt Forest, Cemetery Brook, and the surrounding wetlands. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. The magnitude of proposed development would create traffic issues which would impede emergency response times, impede access to local properties, and disrupt local traffic flows. This would pose a risk to potential health and safety, specifically citing the rerouting of traffic with increased response times from one minute, 47 seconds to four minutes and 23 seconds according to testimony. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The applicant has failed to satisfy the special case criteria as identified in section 20 of the zoning regulations. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Two thirds of the way, guys. Proposed development would specific, more specifically, the 30-foot retaining wall would present a clear and present danger, public danger to residents, children, and emergency first responders. The danger would be increased in the event of inclement weather. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. It is questionable whether the proposed retaining wall would support any large equipment, including fire apparatus responding to emergencies on site. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. There is concern regarding the availability of sufficient water to fight fires in the event that there is a fire on site, specifically regarding the presence of fire hydrants and water in the area. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The stormwater retention is located too close to the structural component of the proposed retaining wall, compromising the structural integrity of the site. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. The applicant has provided insufficient information regarding the entire stormwater control system, which will create unsafe conditions that will compromise the structural integrity of the entire site. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Okay, we covered the 15 we started. Now here becomes the tricky part. Okay. Sidewalks, lack of sidewalks, lack of access to trans, public transportation, and concern regarding the accuracy of the traffic studies presented. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
The Chair votes yes. Okay, the lack of an easement and inability of apparatus to reach the bottom of the wall for maintenance or emergency rescue operations. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Well, let's see here, the heavy presence of construction and truck traffic over a two-year period in order to provide enough fill, evidence regarding a truck arriving every six minutes in order to make those things based on a cubic, cubic calculation of the truck and the devastating effect it would have onto James Farm Road. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The dangerous grade of 10%, which exceeds the approximate, the threshold for most emergency apparatus. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The fact that there was only a small number of, all of this would yield only a small number of affordable units and would actually set us further back in our percentage of affordable housing in the town of Stratford and the long history of Stratford having affordable housing that realistically meets the definition but may not meet the current statutory definition. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Spot zoning, that this application would constitute spot zoning. Mr. Pradette?
Yes, it would.
Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. And then I'm gonna, last two. You guys are gonna hate that. All right, last two. We already do, yep. Punctures in the geosynthetic fabric would allow the water, water to seep through. Mr. Pradette?
Yes.
Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Yes, we just, what, the punctures in the geothermal, geosynthetic fabric would compromise the structural integrity of it. A, the fabric, and it would also allow the water to seep through and compromise the wall.
Okay. And the Chair votes yes on that one. Hydrospatial pressure could compromise the structural integrity of the wall is the last one.
Hydrostatic pressure.
Hydrostatic, I'm sorry, you're right.
But the buildup of water behind the wall would compromise the structural integrity of that wall.
I'm guessing that you're a yes on that one, Mr. Henrik.
I am, yes.
Yes. Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Do you concur? Ms. Manos?
Yes.
Mr. Pradette?
He trying to mix things up a little here? Yes.
Yeah. Make sure you're still right.
Everybody on their toes.
And the Chair votes yes. Okay, that's everything that I have. Anything else anybody else wants to bring up?
Mr. Chairman?
I just want to make sure...
Just before we, I'd like to state for the record that all the information that I gained to use and guide my decisions were, were, was a, a small part from my own personal experience knowledge, but in a large part came from the testimony given. I can't tell you exactly at this point where it was, I can't point to the exact, the exact moment, it's in the record, but everything that got me to this point was based on evidence presented by both sides that guided me in my decision and my, my, my decision-making process to come up with the, with the votes that I gave, as I do believe everybody on the, on the commission did.
Really noted?
I'll second that.
Yeah, why don't you poll the Commissioners on that?
On...
That was one of the judge's points.
If they concur that the, that the evidence is sufficient within the record to help us reach these conclusions?
Correct.
Very good. Mr. Pradette, do you concur with that statement?
I concur wholeheartedly.
Ms. Manos?
I concur.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes, I concur.
And the Chair also concurs, so we all are in conclusion that the, the record, all thousand nine pages of it, supports these findings.
And I just had one other thing, I know that you spoke about that the public health and safety and the environment was outweighed the need for affordable housing, I just wanted to make sure that you, that you got that in there.
Mr. Pradette, do you concur with that statement?
Yes, I do.
Ms. Manos?
Yes, I do.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Henrik?
Based on the multiple hours and multiple nights spent listening to testimony, I would yes, wholeheartedly concur with that statement.
The Chair con, most definitely concurs with that statement and can point to his remarks in pages 715 to 16 to back that up. Okay, Ms. Sullivan, do we have, do you think you have sufficient concur?
I, I think you've done a good job.
Okay, so do we need to do a final rejection vote?
I, I would.
I'm kind of, I'm all for, I don't know if they're all four applications, but I'm all four items.
Yes, I think, let's, let's do that. Chair will make a motion to, let me make sure I get this right.
Can we just make sure that all of the reasons that you've read covers all four decisions? I know you did the, that was the, the longest one.
That was the special case, only. I'm sorry, Jay Habansky here, that was the special case, there were... There were a few other reasons for the text amendment, zone change, and erosion and sediment control. Uh, Chairman, do you have those in front of you? Or Attorney, Attorney Sullivan, do you have those in front of you?
Give me one second here. Okay, the, what, the one that had the, following on the, the discussion was the, the uh, text amendment and then the zone change. Um, it was originally by Mr. Henrik, seconded by Ms. Manos. And then my remarks say, yes, Mr. Chairman, ju- uh, because as we discussed throughout, there's, there were three different items to vote on. I reiterate that for all the reasons that were previously discussed in the more further discussion of the overall project which covered all three areas, I continue to urge the rejection of the zone change from RS1 zone to the Julia Ridge apartment zone which based on the previous vote actually is not even possible. So at this point, I would urge rejection and call for a roll call vote as well. I, let me just see if I can find the and then there was another motion to approve section twenty-eight of the zoning regulations. And that was also done, yeah, there were three. And then the seven, I guess it was the four.
I can barely hear you when you're not facing the camera.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. I'm trying to read from the computer at the same time.
No, no, but.
Hey, um. Commissional standees, I'm just trying to read this.
I think, um.
And we do the it seems that the reasons for denial based on the letters, the text amendment was um. Alright, let me, let me read this here. Okay.
In, in the paperwork, we got the pro- proposed text amendments inconsistent with the town of Stratford's plan of conservation and development. Based on evidence identified in the record, the proposed text amendment is inconsistent with the forest, forest management plan for the town of Stratford Roosevelt Forest. The pro- proposed text amendment will allow for development that would be detrimental to the public health and safety for residents and the surrounding ecosystem based on evidence identified in the record. And the proposed amendment, if approved, would provide a mechanism to perpetuate spot zoning within the town of Stratford.
Okay, that was regarding the text amendment application.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, shall we vote on that, this one with that guidance?
I think Attorney Sullivan and I had a lengthy discussion uh, prior to this vote as to what, what reasons for denial we would use. Some of the other reasons which, which we just spoke about, a lot of those concern um, the development itself but not the, but not the text change. So, you know, the, the, the retaining wall and some of those items wouldn't necessarily go into a vote based on a text change. Now we're just saying whether this text change makes sense to do in those reasons. But the, the, the quality uh, or, or style of development wouldn't necessarily go into a text, a text amendment vote. And, and then when I read the, reread the record, I think Attorney Sullivan, that's where you and I had a quite a lengthy discussion. What, what would need to go into the, the approval or denial of that?
Yeah, and I think you also had in the record, you have a, uh, you know, a letter, a recommendation from the planning commission that the text amendment was inconsistent with the P O C D. I think you have support in the record for um, for the positions that you took with regard to the text amendment. But you're right, uh, the, the other, the one that we just did in terms of the special case was, um, had to do with um, the proposed project um, as opposed to just the concept um, of a, of a text amendment. So.
Okay, so maybe what we should probably do is, since we've just gone through that myriad of items, use that as the, and it appears that that's exactly what happened with the letter of rejection that was issued on May tenth, twenty, twenty eighteen. Um, let's use that as the basis for the uh, decision on the special case application.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if we could, it, since we're relooking at that, if we could include in this the planning commission's unfavorable recommendation of the text change as well. Based on it, based on its inconsistency with the plan of conservation and development.
Okay, I agree with that, Mr. Henrik. Mr. Vicola, do you agree with that?
Yes, I do agree.
Mr. Fredette.
Yes, I do.
And Ms. Manos.
Yes, I do.
Okay, we're in agreement for that. So, if there's no further items, I think I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve seven ninety-five James Farm Road.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman, Mike Henrik.
Mr. Henrik, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Manos. I would, for all the reasons that were stated in the previous discussion, um, I think it's clear where the commission believes are the reasons for uh, that we feel are, is for rejection of this. Um, so therefore, a yes vote would be to approve the special case, a no vote would be to reject it for the reasons which this commission has come to through consensus.
This would be for the text change.
For the special case.
Okay.
Cause the special case had the much more, the long one.
Okay.
Okay. So, roll call vote. Again, a no is to reject for the reasons given, a yes would be to approve. Mr. Fredette, how do you vote, sir?
No.
Ms. Manos.
No.
Uh, Mr. Vicola.
No.
Mr. Henrik.
No.
And the chair votes no, it is rejected. Uh, zero in favor, five in opposition. Is defeated. Okay, for the text amendment application, uh, Mr. Henrik had previously, um, let's actually, can I have a motion to approve the text amendment application?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Henrik, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Manos, discussion. Mr. Chairman, can you just read through those reasons again?
Yeah, um, number one, the proposed text amendment is inconsistent with the town of Stratford's twenty thirteen plan of conservation and development based on evidence identified in the record. Uh, the proposed text amendment is inconsistent with the forest, forest management plan for town of Stratford Roosevelt Forest. The proposed text amendment would allow for development that would be detrimental to the public health and safety for residents and the surrounding ecosystem based on e- evidence identified in the record. And the proposed amendment, if approved, would provide a mechanism to perpetuate spot zoning within the town of Stratford. And based on the uh, the planning commission's unfavorable recommendation of the text change. Um, and, and again, all the, all the evidence in the record was, was based on testimony that we heard, that we sat through, that we listened to. Um, it's, it's part of the record, it's in the record. Um, you know, I, I don't know that we can necessarily go out and circle each line at this point, but it is evidence in the record. It's part of the one thousand plus page um, folder that they sent out to us.
Okay, so what I'll ask first is if there is concurrence with those reasons cited. There were six. The four that were listed in the record of decision as of May tenth, twenty eighteen regarding seventy ninety-five James Farm Road text amendment application. In addition, the planning commission's uh, rejection of the text amendment and the um, voluminous amount of evidence already in the record regarding the project as presented during our public hearings and the rehearing uh, that's being placed uh, tonight. So, Mr. Fredette, do you concur with all these reasons?
I concur with all these reasons.
Ms. Manos, do you concur?
I concur.
Mr. Vicola, do you concur?
Yes, I concur.
Mr. Henrik, I believe you concur.
Yes, sir, I do.
And the chair concurs with all those reasons. Are there any further discussion before we move to a vote? If not, the chair orders a roll call vote. A yes will be to approve the text amendment, a no will be to reject it in following what we, was previously done at our May ninth, twenty eighteen meeting. So, Mr. Fredette, how do you vote, sir?
No.
Ms. Uh, Manos.
No.
Mr. Vicola.
No.
Mr. Henrik.
No.
Chair votes no. With zero members in favor, five in opposition, the motion to approve the text amendment application is hereby rejected. Okay, uh, Mr. Habansky, um, is there a third portion of this that I am missing someplace? I think it's the sediment and erosion control. Unfortunately, I don't have.
We have the, I believe we have the zone change and the erosion and sediment control left to do.
The zone change. Alright, just, just the chamber will stand at ease for a second. Okay, uh, let's do the sediment and erosion control, cause I have that one available in front of me. Um, can I have a motion to approve the application for a sediment and erosion control application for seven ninety-five James Farm Road?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve on Mr. Henrik, is there a second?
Second by Commissioner Vicola.
And then Mr. Vicola. Uh, the reason stated here is that the proposed text amendment special case application, and actually, we haven't done the zone change yet, but I'm sure we will, have been denied, thus no application for review of the sediment and erosion control shall be considered at this time. Unfortunately, I don't have the letter regarding the zone change. I only have three of them, so.
I don't have it either.
Yeah, we're missing that one.
Uh, while you, this Jay Habansky, while you all work on the erosion, I'm, I'm looking through my emails now. Um, Attorney Sullivan, you, I may have emailed it to you as well. So, um, that's what I'm looking for, while you all work on the erosion.
Let me just see if it's in the, the thousand nine-page document.
Um, page seven twenty-three is my discussion with Attorney Sullivan regarding the zone change.
Okay.
Or part of it. And, and we had stated, I think, in there, all of the same reasons for not allowing the special case.
Seven twenty-three, Mike?
Yeah. Seven twenty-three to seven twenty-five. And, and I, I, I talk about all of the issues, or not all, but most of the issues that we uh, discussed regarding the special case.
Okay.
And the vote was made apparently uh, with the same consensus as we came to uh, the special case.
Yeah, you're right, okay. So the reas- the stated reason for the rejection of the zone change from RS1 to Julia Ridge apartment zone is that due to the rejection of the text amendment, there is no such thing as the Julia Ridge apartment zone on our zoning regulations, so it would be impossible for us to actually approve it. So, considering that it's been re-rejected, um, I think that seems like a sufficient reason for us to deny the zone change. So can I have a motion actually to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve, Mike Henrik.
Motion by Mr. Henrik, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Manos. Again, just to reiterate for the reason, um, the Julia Ridge apartment zone that the request is made to go from RS1 to Julia Ridge apartment zone, there is no such thing because it has been rejected in twenty eighteen and re-rejected in twenty twenty by the zoning commission, so it is impossible for us to actually change it. So, a vote yes would be to actually change it. A vote no would be to affirm the decision of the zoning commission and reject the zone change. Mr. Fredette, how do you vote, sir?
I just like to state, if I could, that my reasoning for my vote are based, all based on the same reasons um, regarding the special case. Um, I don't think we should have to go through all the testimony and all the voting on each individual item, but I will be voting on that based on the information concurred upon by this board regarding this special case.
Very good, sir. Mr. Fredette, do you agree with those sentiments?
I agree completely.
Ms. Manos, do you concur?
Yes, I concur.
Mr. Vicola, do you concur?
Yes, I concur.
The chair concurs as well, so I think we have agreement on here. We'll move to an actual vote. So, Mr. Fredette, how do you vote, sir? A no would be to reject it, a yes would be to make the actual change. Rich, we lose you?
I think he's muted.
Rich, unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm unmuted.
Okay. How do you vote, sir? Yes or no?
No.
No, okay, Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Manos.
No.
Mr. Vicola.
No.
Mr. Henrik.
No.
Chair votes no, so with zero members in favor, five members in opposition, the motion fails and is rejected. Finally, the sediment and erosion control uh, formally had been stated that because there is no zone change, there is no special case. There is no um, text amendment. It is impossible for us to actually maintain a sediment and erosion control for something that does not exist. And I believe we should also state that uh, for all of the reasons outlined in the commission in the thousand nine-page record and the rehearing of this uh, tonight in accordance with the law in the court, that we should once again move to reject. So, I actually would. So, I actually would ask for a motion to approve the sediment and erosion control, and we'll proceed to a vote. Mr. Henrik, there's a, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Manos, any further discussion? Not, a yes would be to approve the submitted sediment and erosion control, even though it's possible, and a no vote would be to affirm the vote of the Commission previously in May of twenty eighteen and again tonight. So, Mr. Fredette, do you vote yes or no, sir?
No.
Ms. Manos?
No.
Mr. Vacola?
No.
Mr. Henrik?
No.
And the Chair votes no, with zero members in favor, five in opposition, the motion to approve the sediment and erosion control application is hereby rejected, it fails. Mr. Habansky, did we get it all?
I think, I think you all covered the big...
Then the Town Council has, I'll tell you that.
That one might have broke a record tonight.
It might have been. It might. That's a vote-a-thon. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Does Attorney Sullivan feel that we've met the criteria passed for us by the judge?
Yes, I don't, I don't, I can't see what more we could do, so, um, yeah.
Thank you.
So, procedurally, I guess what we'll do is I will author the written decision, and, um, I think we'll review it with the members and, uh, make sure we have it there, and we will transmit it to the court, uh, indicating that this is the collective decision of the Stratford Zoning Commission concurred by all five Commissioners.
Should, did they get one step further? Should we all sign the document?
I'm, I'm, I'm happy to have a ceremony, if you like.
Does, does Attorney Sullivan feel that...
I mean, I, I, uh, the signature of the Chairman should be sufficient, but I understand how people might feel that they wanna put their John Hancock on it. So, uh, I, I, um, no.
I would personally prefer not to, and I would personally have preferred not to go on through this evening, although I enjoy all your faces, but, um, but if you feel...
And we appreciate your... I think the Chairman's signature is sufficient.
Okay.
I appreciate everyone's participation.
And I shall make it large, like John Hancock's, so that, I'll make it sufficiently large. Okay, moving on, item eight, any goal settings or anything else? I want to answer that question about gold.
Do you need to strike the, the executive session from the record, since we will not be needed to take advantage of that tonight?
That is a good point, sir. Can I have a motion to strike the executive session item? Come on, this is easy, guys.
Motion to strike.
Motion to strike by Mr. Henrik, is there a second?
Second, Vacola.
Second by Mr. Vacola. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. We actually do that one on a voice vote, wow. Okay, any other items before we take a motion to adjourn? The next meeting is on September twenty-third.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Henrik. Second by Mr. Vacola, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Chair votes yes. Okay, we are adjourned at eight thirty-eight PM. Thank you, everybody. I know this was painful.
Thank you, bye.
Thanks, guys.
Good job, everybody.
Bye.